It started. I'm actually going to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. We have a full house here tonight, so thank you everyone for joining us this evening and those who are tuning in on our YouTube channel, thank you. My name is Lauren Christensen. I'm the president and I'm going to ask the remaining board members to introduce themselves, starting with Ms. Ahmed.
Good evening, everyone. Ahmed, board member. Thank you so much for joining us. It's great to see a full house.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Picard, and welcome, everyone.
Good evening. I am Anupam Chigadu. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keel. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Welcome. I'm Jennifer Voss.
Thank you. And I'll ask my student, co-chair student, or co-chair, I suppose, to introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Josh Patterson, and I'm a Plymouth junior and an SVA co-chair. Good to see you all here tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and the team?
Good evening, Superintendent Monica Merritt. Welcome to the board meeting this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to take our minutes. Also want to give a shout out to the voice of PCCS, Mr. John Krieger, and thank him for taking care of our technology needs this evening. I'd like the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jill Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Beth Rayo. I'm the Chief Economic and Innovation Officer.
Good evening. I'm Abdul Mayoun, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vertanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the pledge, please. Ashley, you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Onto the adoption of the agenda and approval of our consent agenda. This is action item number 25-05-74. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 25-05-74.
Can I please have a second?
I can second.
Okay. It was moved by Vice President Sudhu and seconded by Trustee Ahmed. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration. We also have the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting. That's on May 13, 2025. We have quite a few final reading policies this evening. First is policy 1623, that's Section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination. We have policy 2260.01, that is also Section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination, and policy 5517, Section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination. Additionally, we have policy 6110, grant funds, 6111, internal controls, 6112, cash management of grants, 6114, cost principal spending federal funds. This evening, we also have two resolutions for your consideration as a part of the consent agenda. The first is the MHSAA membership. We do this annually in order for our students to participate through the Michigan High School Athletic Association for August 1, 2025, through July 31, 2026. Additionally, we have our cooperative agreement with Wayne Westland Community Schools. This is for the William Ford Center that will allow our students to participate in the program for career and technical education.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, 6-0. Mr. Madhun, can you please take us through human resources?
Yes. I'd like to acknowledge the retirees that we have on today's agenda. So I'll start with Kristin Britoya, who was a social school coach at Tonda. She's been with the district since 1990. Lynn Kennedy, a classroom teacher at Dotson, has been with the district since 1995. Christopher Moore, who was a middle school assistant principal, has been with the district since 2000. Lisa Peel, history teacher at Plymouth, has been with the district since 1990. Kelly Bruno, a science teacher at East, has been with the district since 1995. Joni Van Dyke, a resource room teacher at Plymouth, has been with the district since 2007. And Robin Wisner, a resource room teacher at Field, has been with the district since 1995. Let's give a round of applause for those retirees. And we thank them for their years of service to the district. And that's it for today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Onto celebrating success with members of you. Thank you.
This is one of the highlights of the evening. So this evening, the Board of Education is honored to celebrate the exceptional contributions of one of our outstanding leaders by presenting an extra miler award to Mr. George Hill, the Principal of Byrd Elementary School. Principal Hill has been a constant and inspiring presence at Byrd Elementary for the past six years. Whether greeting students in the hallway, chatting with them at recess, or participating in school events like STEM Night, come on out. It's all about you. So whether it's STEM Night, Halloween festivities, Curriculum Night, Mr. Hill leads the heart and presence and passion for students. He is not just seen, he is known. He is known for creating a welcoming, inclusive school culture where all students feel seen, supported, and empowered to succeed. He models the values of Byrd Elementary School creed, integrity, respect, belief in oneself, and dreaming big. Mr. Hill's commitment to diversity and inclusion is evident in every aspect of Byrd Elementary. He ensures that every child, regardless of background, feels valued. He leads with empathy and builds connections with students at their level, whether that means talking to them on a tough moment or joining them in a game on the playground. At this time, I would like to invite Byrd parent, Byrd Elementary parent, Megan Daniel, to share a few words about her reflections about Principal Hill.
All right. Hello. My name is Megan Daniel. I'm a proud parent at Byrd Elementary School. I'll keep this brief because there are a few students who would like to share their thoughts about how amazing Principal Hill is. And let's be honest, they're much cuter than I am. Six years ago, my now fifth grader started kindergarten at Byrd. Like many parents, I was nervous. New school and a brand new principal. We didn't know what to expect, but wow, were we blown away. Then, of course, COVID hit. I remember feeling for this new principal who had to lead through this completely uncharted territory. But Mr. Hill, as always, showed up with dependability, energy, and a true commitment to helping Byrd thrive. As a frequent school volunteer, I've had the chance to witness firsthand how he interacts with the students. He gets down on their level, truly sees them, and makes them feel like they're a central part of the Byrd family. I've even seen him build a snowman on the playground. How many principals can we say have done that? He empowers his students to do their best, and he does it with kindness, compassion, and silliness. And let's not forget, he might just be the best dressed principal around. I am beyond grateful for this elementary experience my children have had, and so much of that is thanks to Mr. Hill. And I'll have Alex Rutter come up and read a few words.
Hi. My name is Alex. My name is Alex Rutter, and I'm in third grade at Byrd Elementary. Mr. Hill is a great principal because he cares about all the students at Byrd and is always there for us when we need him. He can usually be found in the hallways helping out students and looking cool in his mantisuits. I wore one tonight in honor of him. Thanks, Principal Hill.
And then this is Brooklyn Daniel.
Hello. I'm Brooklyn Daniel, a fifth grader at Byrd Elementary. I have had the honor of having Mr. Hill as my principal for the last six years. I love how funny he is and how hard he works to make Byrd Elementary the best school around. My favorite memory is when Mr. Hill and Dr. Wagner dressed up in inflatable costumes. Mr. Hill helps us always remember to believe in ourselves, invest in our learning, respect ourselves and others, and to dream big. These are the words to our school creed. Mr. Hill makes this creed reflect in our school. I'm so lucky to have him as my principal. Once again, always a once a Thunderbird, always a Thunderbird. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you for those thoughtful and very powerful words. I would now like to welcome the Executive Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Denise Lilly, to share a few words about Principal Hill.
Good evening, everyone. And I won't be as cute as Brooklyn and Alex, but I'll try my best. Principal Hill is a courageous leader who continuously goes above and beyond to ensure that all students and staff feel welcomed and supported. He leads with integrity, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to equity and excellence. Through intentional actions and inclusive vision, he has fostered a school culture where every student feels seen, valued, and empowered to succeed. Staff members, students, and families have been inspired by his dedication and support through professional development, collaborative opportunities, and a shared belief in the potential of every student. Principal Hill's leadership not only uplifts the school community, but also sets a powerful example of what it means to lead with courage, heart, and purpose. I am very honored to work with Mr. Hill, and I have seen every day the work that he does and the contributions that he gives to not only Byrd Elementary School, but our entire team. So, Mr. Hill, well deserved.
Come closer. Principal Hill, thank you for being the leader that every school dreams of having. Your dedication, care, and leadership shape not just the school, but the future filled with confident, capable, and compassionate learners. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire PCCS community, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. You embody what it means to lead with purpose, passion, and heart. Would you like to share a few words?
No, but I will. I just want to say I'm very honored to be acknowledged. I don't get up every day and do this work to be acknowledged. I simply love what I do. I come to work to, excuse me, celebrate kids and do the best things I can to make them have a great experience at Byrd Elementary School. I can't really take credit for all of this because I have a great team of support with my colleagues at the elementary level, and I also have an amazing team at Byrd School. So I would be remiss if I didn't celebrate them because Byrd School is a great place, not just because of me, but because of all of us. So I'm truly honored and thank you for this opportunity.
All right. It's always a hard act to follow. Those are so wonderful. So congratulations to Mr. Hill, and thank you to the students who spoke. That was just so inspiring. Onto Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. I do have a few things that I want to say this evening. First of all, thank you for everyone who is here on a night like this, when we've had a stretch of rain, and now we have a little bit of sunshine. So I do appreciate those who are sacrificing their evening to be with us. I want to wish everyone well as we embark on these final days of the 2024-2025 school year. For our seniors, I think it's under, what, two weeks now at this point? So I'm sure everybody's counting down the days. I want to give a shout out to my fellow board members that were in attendance of the high school honors nights this last week. And of course, an even bigger shout out to the students who were in attendance as well, who received accolades and scholarships for their great accomplishments this year. I also want to send some well wishes to everyone in these remaining days of the school year. Teachers, I'm hoping that you're able to enjoy these last few days with your classes and ride that wave of the year-end excitement. And, you know, have a little patience. I know there's the year-end jitters that all the kids are bouncing off the wall, and I understand that. Students, may you hang on for these last few days of school, of learning, and celebrating your accomplishments. And to the parents, I hope you're also surviving May-December and keeping it all together for these last few days. I would be remiss if I didn't also look ahead to the next school year. Young fives and the kindergarten registration is still up, so if you have any neighbors or friends or community members who are looking for a school district to join, please come on over to PCCS. More information can be found on our district website, pccsk12.com. And that concludes my President's Report. Okay, up next, we have Student Performance and Achievement Committee. Now normally, Member Westra would report out, but she's not in tonight. Members Sudhu, are you able to share some updates?
Sure. We actually have not met since the last report out, but we do have a meeting coming up in this room, June 4 at 5:00 PM. Would love for all of you or anyone watching to join us.
Okay. Thank you. Up next is the Policy Committee. Back to you.
We actually just met, and I have some things to report out. By the way, I want to thank people that do show up to our committee meetings. We had three people that spoke during Citizens Comments. We have two committee members that are parents, and we have three students that are part of our committee. So to have that kind of collaboration in terms of what we do for students is really inspiring. So thank you to everyone that showed up today. So we went through really sort of dense policies in terms of changes for procurement purposes. These are federal changes. We looked at policy 6325, procurement federal grants and funds. There are a lot of changes happening at the federal level that get passed down to Neola, which is the company we contract with, to take that language and to draft policies for us. And those policies come forward with legal guidance. So we reviewed those recommendations, had minor tweaks for that one. We also looked at policy 7310, disposition of surplus property. We didn't have any changes for this one, so it will come to the full board for a first read at the next meeting. And the next one we reviewed was policy 7450, property inventory. That, again, did not have any changes, so it will come to the whole board for a first read at the next meeting. Our next meeting for policy is going to be June 24 at 5:30 PM down the hallway. So please join us for that one as well.
Thank you very much. Onto Finance and Operations Committee with Member Keel.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, May 22 at 5:00 PM here in this room, and we reviewed a couple of the presentations that we'll be seeing this evening, including the budget progress update, as well as the recommendation to purchase security cameras for the CTE areas. We also did a review of the financial reports for the month of April. Our next meeting is a slight adjustment in the process here. The Starkweather graduation ceremony is at 6:00 PM at Salem High School, and many of the board members, including those that are on the FNO committee, really want to attend that. So we're moving the time up to 4:30, and we'll be holding that FNO meeting in the Salem Main Office Conference Room. It is still a public meeting, and we welcome people to come to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto Student Voice in Action Committee with both Josh and Arjun.
Thank you. At our last Student Voice in Action meeting in Wetstone, the PCCS dietitian brought spicy and plain boneless wings for SVA students to try and provide feedback on. Very yummy, by the way. Our lunches are amazing. We then discussed how our Wear Green for Mental Health Day went and worked to come up with a plan to improve it for next year.
Finally, we talked about the hate and bias forum, when to use it, and some common misconceptions about the forum. And our next Student Voice in Action meeting will be next school year, with the date still being determined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Up next is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Merritt.
Thank you. This evening, I want to begin by offering my sincerest congratulations to the graduating class of 2025. Please join me in a round of applause for our seniors. PCEP seniors will attend their last day of classes, and they will have the prom this week. We'll celebrate our graduates from Starkweather on June 5. That will take place at the Salem's Gloria Logan Auditorium. And PCEP, all three schools will have their commencement on June 8, and that will be at the George Girvin Game Above Center at EMU. When we think about our graduates and their journey, they truly embody that learner profile coming through our system, many from pre-K through their senior year. So we're very proud of them. We look forward to their future endeavors. I know that there is no ceiling on what they are able to do. We also want to thank their incredible teachers and staff for their support and really just pouring into our young people to allow them to truly learn, prepare, and thrive here at PCCS. When we talk about thriving, we had the pleasure of seeing and celebrating our students this week at their honors ceremony. This was really to highlight their accomplishments in both academics. They had scholarships. They had athletics and extracurricular activity successes. We had quite a few board members that were able to join us, and we appreciate Member Voss from being there, Member Sudhu, Member Picard from being able to share and represent the board that those various evenings. I believe millions of dollars at each school, a couple of millions of dollars' worth of scholarships were earned by our young people. So again, this is just another example of the many ways our students use their education provided here at PCCS to find their best success and prepare for their future life outside of high school. So just again, congratulations to our young people. This week, I think I highlighted this at the last meeting. We had a couple of opportunities to be in the news. It was wonderful to see the great things that are happening at PCEP. This was on Channel 4's In Your Community segment. The cameras followed. This is our senior Ben Trudell for Day at the Park, and the piece highlighted the many opportunities available for students on our three-school campus. Now, this, I think they had the opportunity, Ben is really a superstar. He was in the world-renowned culinary program as well as the radio station. So he had an opportunity to see and share some of the experiences with our young people. But we were really, really proud of that accomplishment. But of course, not to be outdone, thanks to Member Picard's husband, we were able to get Channel 7 to highlight our radio station, 881 The Park, and its campaign to expand its studio space. The station had a busy and successful week that week after their annual radio station auction raised almost $30,000 towards the studio expansion project. So we are well on our way. We continue to be thankful to Plymouth Rotary PM that has this match campaign for us. So we, what is the total number, John? Don't let me say the wrong number. $200?
$200,000.
$200,000. So we're going to match that, and our community is supporting our young students for this excellent experience. And we know that we will get that studio expanded. So we're so appreciative. And finally, I'd like to end just celebrating the hard work of our students across the district this month at the PCCS K-12 art show. Did see quite a few board members there in attendance as well. The show highlighted outstanding student work from across the buildings in the district. We had hundreds of visitors that day. They had outstanding arts educations here at PCCS at all grade levels. We want to thank our art teachers and our K-12 curriculum coordinators for visual and performing arts, Ms. Kathy Williams, for their hard work and dedication to our young students. And hopefully, we have an opportunity to be able to put some of these pieces on display here in the boardroom, maybe rotate them out. That'd be great to see. So that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Okay. Up next, we have Citizens Comments. So just wanted to let you know, we have quite a few here that we're going to go through. We have about, the first section of Citizens Comments is limited to 30 minutes. Ms. Robertson is going to set the timer. Each person gets about three minutes, not about, they get three minutes, to talk. Just note, at this time, it's our opportunity to hear you, but board members do not actually respond to Citizens Comments at the time. But Dr. Merritt and the administration will provide follow-up. As a reminder, please do not share any names when sharing any concerns or criticisms unless you have that individual's permission to do so. Let's get started. All right. Up first, we have Christopher Townsend.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of concerned parents and guardians here in this area, I come before you tonight, not as a stranger, or not a stranger to struggle, but someone who was shaped by the soul of Mississippi, right? A place where true oppression once wore a war no mask. A land where my parents drank from separate fountains and walked a long road of disenfranchisement. That's why I find it both offensive and alarming that this board has chosen to uphold policies rooted in an ideology that pretends to heal, but in practice divides. I'm referring to the so-called Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Framework, better known as DEI, and how it's no longer a benign initiative. It is now state-sanctioned favoritism wrapped in academic jargon, which you've enshrined in your policy manual under educational and racial equity. It's laced with divisive terms and slogans more suitable for political rallies than public education. And under Executive Order 14151, it is now unlawful. The federal government has spoken, the Department of Education has acted, and your refusal to comply is not a stand for justice, is defiance of law and a betrayal of duty. To equate the lived experience of foundational Black Americans, people whose ancestors built this nation in chains, with someone's sexual preference or gender identity is not inclusion, it's insult. We bled for the right to vote, and we fought for the right to be judged based on the content of our character and not the color of our skin. Yet you continue to bundle us into acronyms. Our history is not to be used for your social experiment, and neither should Title IX, a law born from our struggle for equity. While refusing to comply with its true intent by forcing women and girls to compete against male-bodied athletes, it's not progress. It can only be seen as erasure. And let's be honest, you didn't invent this language. It was imported. This policy recycles academic activism and imposes on students who came here to learn reading, writing, and arithmetic, not Marxism. And for what? So this district can be a progressive trophy case so you can act like you're above the law? I think not. And I'm here to remind you that even in this affluent bubble, the law still applies. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have Tim Moza.
Good evening. My name is Tim Moza. I understand there's a group of people here today that are displeased with your actions, but I'm not here to condemn you. I'm here to thank you and to commend you. First, thank you for finding a way to remove parents from the equation entirely. For far too long, it's been thought that raising kids was a team effort, parents, teachers, working together. But you, oh wise board, have discovered the sweet spot where parents are just a funding source. No need to tell them about name changes, pronouns, or private medical matters. After all, what could parents possibly know about their own children? Second, thank you for what can only be called innovation, cracking the centuries-old problem of how to get pornography into the hands of minors. For decades, predators tried and failed. The law kept stopping them. But you found the golden loophole. Just slap a school library code on it, call it literature, and bam, mission accomplished. That's the kind of deception even Satan himself would applaud. It's truly masterful. Third, thank you for revolutionizing the concept of private spaces. For years, silly old-fashioned people thought the girls' bathroom was, you know, for girls. But you cracked the code. Now anyone can declare a new identity, and boom, it's a co-ed free-for-all. Privacy boundaries, safety, who needs them when you've got a progressive policy to uphold? Fourth, thank you for elevating education beyond boring things like math and reading. Why waste time there when you can train kids to sort themselves by race, gender, and victimhood status? You've managed to replace unity with division, merit with identity, and shared values with grievance charts. Bravo. Truly, you redefined what it means to educate. And finally, here in the Detroit area, home of the legendary Dan Campbell, who I'm a big fan of, we know what it means to bite kneecaps, play hard, and fight with grit. But thank you, Plymouth Kent School Board, for showing us that not all men and women need to be bold defenders. No, no, they can still be cowardly, compliant, weak-kneed leaders who fold under the slightest cultural pressures. Thank you for reminding us what spineless leadership looks like so our kids never feel the burden of becoming anything more. And most of all, thank you for showing our children they never need to aim for courage, honor, or conviction. After all, look how far you've come without any of it.
Okay, thank you. Up next is, and I'm going to do my best to pronounce this, so please correct me, John Anuchukwu?
It's Amanchukwu.
Amanchukwu. Thank you for the correction. Please come on up.
It means I know God. That's what it means.
Okay, thank you.
You know, since your policy likes to say that a kid can be what they want to be, you know, if a kid thinks they're a cat, we call that furries, they can come and be a cat at school. If they can be a dog, they want to be a dog, be a dog at school. And hey, I'm black, as you can see, but I'm a white woman right now, and I'm six months pregnant. Matter of fact, I'm a board member. Do I have the right to go grab a seat and just sit down right there in an empty seat right there? Can I go sit there? Is it okay if I sit over there? Can I? Can I go sit down?
You're speaking, so I'd like you to stay at the podium.
Can I go sit down over there? I identify as a school board member. Are you going to take away my rights? You know, because if you can identify as a, you know, a woman to be a man, why not? Because this is what you all believe. This is the insanity of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And many of these policies have been pushed by this wicked god called Gretchen Whitmer, who many of you all worship at her feet, who has never met an abortion policy that she doesn't dislike. And you know what Margaret Sanger said in the letter to Dr. Clarence C.J. Gamble in 1939? Margaret Sanger said that she did not want the word to get out, that she wanted to exterminate the Negro population. And she would use the black charismatic preacher if it ever occurred to any of their more rebellious Negroes. And guess what? She was a white liberal. And there's some white liberals on this board. Some other minorities as well who are also into liberalism. But guess what? You are pushing racism because you support abortion. You even thought at one point that children should have the right to abort their baby and keep that information away from parents. Let me tell you something, God is going to judge every last one of you harshly. One day, especially you, Mr. Patrick Keigho, you love to talk about abortion. You're a liberal of all liberals. Let me tell you something, there's coming a day where you'll stand before almighty God and you're going to have to give an answer to this. The Bible says every man shall stand before the judgment seat of Christ to give an answer of what they've done in their body, whether it be good or bad. And knowing the terror of the Lord, Paul says he persuades men. But you all think you're God because you have a seat. You have a seat and you think you're God. You think you wrote the Bible? You think absolute truth comes from you? It doesn't. It comes from God. And God is going to judge you harshly because you have damaged children. You know, it's better to have a millstone tied around your neck than to do harm to a kid. God is going to get you. God's going to judge you harshly. And what will you do in the judgment? How will you respond? Because when God decrees a thing, there is no man that can change it. So enjoy your comfortable seats while you can, because wrath is coming.
Okay, up next, we have Kelsey Ray.
Thank you. I'm speaking today as a mother of four, a K-12 educational administrator, and the owner and director of a private lending library, because I have immense concern regarding the safety, mental health, and legal protection of the students in your care. There are books in the middle and high school libraries that contain graphic sexual content, depictions of violence, and detailed suicidal ideation. Books like Flamer by Mike Curato, George by Alex Gino, Jay's Gay Agenda by Jason June, and The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas, the last of which depicts violent racism and police brutality as a norm with extremely mature content. Due to the experimental sexuality and mature content of these titles, all of these books have been listed with the American Library Association as being amongst the most contested and bomb books across schools in the United States, but they're on your shelves. These books have been removed by your own educational colleagues, but they exist in your school system. The literary descriptions and the illustrations are blatantly violent and pornographic and offer no psychological resolution, only gross exposure, leaving children confused and traumatized. These are materials available in your middle school libraries to children as young as 11 without parental knowledge or oversight. The scientific data on harm is overwhelming. A 2020 JAMA pediatric study found that children exposed to pornography, even soft porn before age 13, are three times more likely to suffer from clinical depression and suicide. Three times. According to the CDC, suicide is now the second leading cause of death among children ages 10 to 14. Studies also confirm what's called suicide contagion, when young people read or see detailed stories of self-harm or suicide, and they are significantly more likely to develop similar thoughts or behaviors themselves. Again, these books are on your library shelves. Let me be clear, this is not art. This is not diverse storytelling, because there is zero quantifiable scientific proof that they contain educational value. Allowing these books in your library is dangerous to the mental health of your students, and under Code 1470, it's a federal offense to provide obscene material to a minor, and there is no exception carved out for school libraries. What has been hiding on your shelves is now exposed, and you need to deal with it. This is not theoretical or partisan. This board has publicly committed to protecting students and creating safe, respectful learning environments. So I ask you, how does allowing middle school students to access content that glorifies suicide, depicts violent and graphic sexual acts, and stories that normalize emotional trauma aligned with your mission? Especially when you acknowledge that you're concerned about the mental and emotional health of the children of Plymouth. I heard this from the two gentlemen over here in the corner. This is not about censorship. This is about protection. The science is clear, and actually, the federal law is very clear. And now, I end. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Reston Ray.
I love being a dad. I have four kids. Pretty sure you guys all love kids too, right? You guys probably have kids. I mean, you work in education. There's a lot of passion in this room. There's a lot of passion in everyone's hearts right now because of the passion in the room. You know, there's a, there's a famous saying, you know, that, you know, we're not raising boys and girls. You guys know the saying. We're raising men and women. You know, we're not, we're not trying to just coddle kids to stay here. We want to develop them. That's in all of us. I mean, think back to when you first took your career path. It's because you admired a teacher. Someone that looked at you and said, you know what? That's an individual with some potential. I'm going to give of my time and invest in them. They did that for you, and now you want to do that for others. I remember, I remember being a kid, man, my favorite teacher, we call him Z. His last name was Zorton, Daryl Zorton, from out where I grew up. He was a shop teacher. I was not an academic. I'm dyslexic. It's hard for me to read. I'm really good with math when the numbers are what I say they are. But it's when they actually are, I struggle, you know? But Daryl Zorton, man, I honor that man to death, because he looked at me and he said, you know what? You're a, you're a man that works with your hands. You're a skilled worker. I'm going to pour trades education into you, and I'm going to give you some dignity. I also work for an organization called SexChangeRegret.com. I get emails from all over the world from people looking for dignity. They thought they could find it with Sex Change, with Transgender Confusion. They, they thought they could. People that trusted them were confused and had that heart of, you know what? I don't understand it, but this is what the experts are telling me. This is how I think I should help you. Can I tell you blatantly that gender-affirming therapy is not what I see as being beneficial to the student? What I see beneficial is trauma therapy. Over and over and over again, I'm getting emails, literally, I got one from Columbia the other day, of someone saying, I was abused when I was a kid, now I hate myself. Did I bring it on myself? Did I do this? I hate that organ now, because I was abused by that organ. I want it chopped off. I don't think I'm a one, but I sure don't want to be a man. So I want to encourage all of you to just pump the brakes with some of the ideology going on around here. Rewind yourself a little bit to when, when that person that poured into you, that made you wanted to get into education, that said, you know what? You have dignity. You have value. I'm going to pour into you. There's people in this room that don't want to promote the gender ideology stuff, but they don't know what to do. So I just want to encourage you guys, reconsider the therapy that you're giving. Go with trauma therapy. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Colin Miranda.
Good evening. I'm Colin Miranda, a Plymouth resident. In February, the policy committee said that Neola was suggesting fixes to grammatical errors by replacing singular third-person pronouns like he/him/his and she/her/hers with pronouns like they/them/theyrs. Ironically, these suggestions actually introduced grammatical errors into some policies. In April, I spoke at the school board meeting, demonstrating that using they as a singular pronoun is grammatically incorrect. The board responded respectfully and thoughtfully, saying, while traditionally considered plural, they/they're is now widely accepted by major grammar authorities, including the Chicago Manual of Style, as a grammatically correct singular pronoun. Our board policies are developed in partnership with Neola, which follows current language standards. Yes, I agree. The Chicago Manual of Style, or CMOS, now says that they can be used as a singular pronoun. However, this does not warrant any policy changes. CMOS does not say that they is a grammatically correct singular pronoun, and certainly does not say that this is part of the current language standard. It simply states, we now also endorse the use, and it is increasingly acceptable. CMOS never states that the his/her construction, which we find in the pre-modified policies, is incorrect. Rather, it instructs writers to use singular they only after trying seven other options for gender neutrality. Because these options, other options are workable in the policies in question, it appears as though Neola never actually opened up CMOS. Any appeal to CMOS would actually require the board not to use they or its derivatives where the committee has indicated. Moreover, an honest read of CMOS reveals that a dogmatic appeal to its authority is completely unwarranted in the first place. CMOS admits that dozens of changes throughout every chapter stem from the ideas our readers have contributed through social media, including the use of they as a singular pronoun. Apparently, the self-described definitive guide borrows its authority from the general public's social media suggestions and even tweets. Brian Garner arranged the grammar and usage chapters for CMOS. He directs the reader to his own book, Garner's Modern English Usage. Whereas CMOS deceptively calls the use of the singular they a natural development in language, Garner more honestly admits, by a confluence of natural linguistic evolution and a few social engineering campaigns, the word has been thrust into prominence. Dictionaries and style books have begun sanctioning those sentences as acceptable, mostly because of social pressures. The linguist Jeffrey Pullum says, this was a radical break with all previous English grammar, pushed by a sudden enthusiasm for non-binary and sexual identity. This is not an authentic exercise of authority by CMOS. Appealing to CMOS only reveals that Neola and the school board are not following current language standards. I ask that the board please stop using Neola's grammatical errors. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Peggy Leonard.
Hello. You hear me? Yeah. Hello. My name is Peggy Leonard, and I'm a retired art teacher from the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Thank you for the various leadership roles that you have within this district. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of my colleagues from Bentley Elementary. You need to know that the culture at that school is being destroyed, and it begins at the top with the leadership. In my 35 years of teaching, I had various leaders, but never was I degraded, harassed, and bullied by a principal until he arrived at Lakewood. This same leader is now at Bentley. Actually, he's only been there for two years. But did you know that a significant number of teachers have retired? Some are on leave, and many are currently on the transfer list. This means that systemically, something is wrong, and this should be a call to action. For parents that might watch this, and those in the audience, ask this question, what happened to my child's teacher? There is a special bond that exists between a teacher and their classroom. It's what makes this job so special. So for a teacher to leave that job mid-year means that something is drastically wrong. The situation is complicated, because it's very targeted and very specific towards certain individuals. It's targeted towards non-tenure teachers, and especially those tenured teachers who are nearing the end of their teaching careers. This is not the way any teacher wants to end what's been a rewarding life work. You might hear this particular leader say, I'm here for the students. But what you should be hearing him say is that I'm here for my teachers. Teachers who are valued, acknowledged, and supported stay in their jobs. I urge you to take a hard look at the culture within this school. No one should have to endure the abuse that many of us have felt. Some of those teachers are here tonight, but many more are afraid to come forward for fear of retaliation and for fear of being forced out of a job they love. I urge you to address this situation. This should be your call for action. Thank you.
Amen. How are we doing on time? Diane, how much, how are we doing on time?
Seven to six.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Nicole McGinn. Correct me if I'm saying that wrong.
It's Nicole McGinn.
McGinn, okay, thank you.
My name is Nicole McGinn, and I was asked by the Bentley teachers to speak tonight regarding their current principal. He previously served as my principal at Lakewood Elementary in the Ann Arbor Public School District during 2017-18 academic year. I bring 20 years of teaching experience to my current role as a reading specialist in Washtenaw County. Previously, I taught second, third, and fourth grades, and I hold a master's degree in reading and language arts, along with a K-12 reading specialist endorsement. The following are some facts about Bentley's principal concerning his conduct and actions during his leadership at Lakewood. Seven staff members left his first year as principal, including myself. Some were denied a transfer, which was a reasonable request, with others forced to resign. No matter what the teacher did, there was a constant criticism. This principal constantly found fault, first with her lesson plan format, then with every minor detail, even after the format was changed to his format. Week after week, this teacher was forced to make pointless edits and add irrelevant content. This teacher was also constantly being watched. This principal came into her classroom every day for weeks and questioned her on everything she was teaching, which created a stressful environment and had parents asking questions. This principal belittled and shouted at this teacher during an IEP meeting with staff and parents present, later claiming it was her fault. This teacher began taking detailed notes every weekly meeting with this principal because he frequently would contradict or deny her, his earlier statements. This was a clear case of gaslighting by the principal, a form of emotional abuse where the victim is made to doubt their own experiences and feelings. Because of this, this teacher took pictures of her classroom furniture to prove that she had flexible seating, because he constantly said that she did not. And in Ann Arbor Public Schools, new teachers are assigned mentors by their principals. Unfortunately, this teacher was ignored and told to find her own mentor. She finally found one, but only in a different school, because no one at her own building was willing to support her in fear of retaliation from this principal. Despite weeks of training and preparation, the teacher serving as a report card building representative unexpectedly had her responsibilities taken away. She was excluded from meetings, and her role was given to someone else, all without any explanation. After this teacher resigned, parents were told that she did not follow the curriculum, which was untrue. I went through all of these moments. I was that teacher. A teacher who was rated highly effective for many years prior to this principal and even from him. If you look at the 12 Signs of Bullying and Harassment in a Workplace written by Ellie Collier, provided by High Speed Training, nine of the 12 are listed above. Refusing reasonable requests, constant criticism, overbearing supervision or monitoring, threats, aggression, and shouting, misusing a position of power to belittle, demean, or intimidate, being excluded and ignored, removal of duties without reason, having malicious rumors spread about you, and having unfounded threats and comments about your job security. With him now in the role of principal at Bentley, and with the pattern of teacher departures and medical leaves, both at Lakewood and at Bentley, one must wonder, is this merely a coincidence or a pattern?
Up next, we have Julie Milo Cassar. Did I say that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I'm reading a letter from one of our parents from Bentley Elementary School. Good evening. I'm writing to you as a concerned parent of two children currently attending Bentley Elementary School. I watched portions of the board, Board Education Meeting on the 13th. It was absolutely horrifying to hear the emotional abuse and toxic work environment that several teachers have experienced since the new leadership took position at Bentley. When my oldest was in third grade, her- When my oldest was in third grade, her teacher was Michelle West. Michelle left halfway through the school year for reasons unknown to my family, which greatly impacted my teacher, who loved, my daughter, who loved her as a teacher and was devastated when she left, thinking that she perhaps had cancer. After hearing the reason Michelle left, and several other wonderful teachers that decided to leave Bentley, I feel I have no choice but to reach out to you and voice my absolute disgust in the situation. I'm concerned extremely that an individual whose behavior and treatment of teachers has created a work environment so hostile as for its, for its devoted veteran teachers who love teaching to resign in the middle of the school year, have been allowed to remain in the position of principal. I can understand the complaint simply being noted that even brushed off may be difference of personalities if the accusations against them are only from one or two teachers. But this individual's bully-like behavior has been reported by 17 individual seasoned educators and paraprofessionals. They've been ignored and allowed to carry on with no precautions, he has been allowed to, with no precautions or fair investigations. This type of behavior would never be tolerated among students, would never be tolerated among teachers, and should absolutely never be tolerated by an individual whose job description is to support the teaching staff around him and represent the culture of the school. Over the last two years, I've noticed a significant drop in educational lesson planning and relationship building with my children and their substitute and new teachers, especially as many of those teachers are brought in mid-school year with no warning to kids or parents, knowing now that these changes correlate with the arrival of the new leadership at Bentley. Based on the testimonies during the May 13th Board of Education Meeting, it appears as though you, as a leadership of this district, have failed to support these teachers with their concerns that were initially raised. And my children have had to pay the price with brand-new and often uncertified teachers in place of experienced and professional ones. My husband and I want to ensure that the environment our children are learning is uplifting and supportive and non-toxic, not only for them, but for their fellow students, but for teachers we trust and rely upon to teach. Model appropriate attitudes, behaviors, and provide a safe educational environment for our children. Because of this, I respectfully ask that the district, the superintendent, and the board look into this matter further, allow for fair and proper investigation into many allegations against the administrator at Bentley, and consider reinstating the teachers that have left, either on their own or due to toxic, the toxic environment. Not only does your decision matter, impact the staffing of this upcoming year, but the year after this, and the entirety of Plymouth Canton community is watching you now, and the very reputation of Plymouth Canton Community Schools, specifically Bentley Elementary, is at stake. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Amy Jubinville." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have time for one more. We have Michelle West.
Hi, I'm Michelle West, and I stand here before you on behalf of Bentley teachers. I'm here to talk further about the treatment of teachers at Bentley Elementary School. This is part of a letter responding to a parent's concern from Human Resources. Thank you for sharing your concerns with me. While I understand the emotional responses matter has triggered, I must respectfully caution against making assumptions based solely on the comments heard during the meeting. It is important to remember that the information presented is only one perspective, and a thorough investigation must be conducted to ensure that all sides are considered fairly. Please rest assured that we take all allegations seriously, and we are committed to fully investigating the matter. Here's my questions. Why did it take the district over a week to contact the teachers who spoke at the May 13th meeting? They're doing a thorough investigation, and why did we have to initiate contact? We are committed to fully investigating the matter. How? How are you doing this? Is there any sense of urgency? What about the employees still at Bentley? At least six are brave enough to come forward and are on the transfer list. Why do their transfer interviews keep getting postponed? Another quote from the letter from Human Resources. "It is important to remember that the information presented is only one perspective." No. No, it's not. It's a perspective of 10 staff members. We have written statements from 10 staff members who are brave enough to come forward, and two previous employees from Ann Arbor that state that they left the school because of the principal. Why haven't the 16 or 17 employees that have left Bentley, Bentley been interviewed? Do you want to know their perspective? Or do you want to just cover this up and hope summer break takes it away? Does Plymouth Canton Schools have a policy on how internal investigations are done? If so, we'd like to see it. And finally, and this is from a current employee at Bentley, quote, "I hate coming here, but I will not let him force me out. If I can't transfer, then I may have to retire." I asked this teacher to come and speak. This teacher said, quote, "If I speak, then I might as well be done. He'll never let me finish the next year. I hope saving this principal is worth sacrificing all of us."
Okay, thank you. That concludes this section of Citizens' Comments. We will pick up the remainder later in the agenda. Let's move on to administrative reports and recommendations. First up, we have Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you an update on our progress with developing the 2025-2026 General Fund Budget. We always start our budget work with a connection, oops, excuse me. There we go. We always start our work with a connection to the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Dynamic Plan. Strategic Goal A indicates that calls for PCCS to increase achievement for all students and close achievement gaps. And we will attain that through our strategic objective FNO 1 and 2, align financial resources, including state and federal resources, to areas of greatest need, have support for individual students as identified through academic achievement data. And also through our strategic goal B. All Plymouth Canton Community School students and staff will report that they feel physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented at school. We'll attain this through strategic, strategic objective FNO 4, to align financial resources to the areas of greatest need to support the social-emotional needs of all staff and students. So with that as a foundation, this evening, we will take a look at our budget development timeline so we can understand where we are in that process, what we've achieved, and what's yet to come. I'll preview, or rather not preview, but share some highlights of the Executive House and Senate budget proposals for the School Aid Fund, as well as share some highlights and outcomes from the May 2025 Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference. I recall that this Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, also called a CREC for short, occurs twice at the state per year, January and May. And so there are some changes in those revenue projections. I'll also review our budget assumptions and considerations as we start to build out our 25-26 budget, and then I'll review our next steps from here. So with that, our budget development timeline, you can see the grayed out items we've accomplished together, both at the FNO committee meetings and then here at a full board meeting. We have the arrow at May 22, that was Thursday evening, where we did review the May CREC, the House and Senate budget proposals, and our updated budget assumptions. And so with that, this evening, I'm bringing that information here forward for the full board. And then we will meet again in June, and I'll review that at a later step this evening. So some highlights from the Executive House and Senate proposals for School Aid. The executive recommendation was issued by our governor on February 2nd. I've reviewed that, some highlights in previous meetings since that time. But the Senate released their budget proposal on May 14th, Senate Bills 166. And the House budget proposal, they passed an abbreviated proposal on March 6th, House Bill 4162. And we do expect a full House budget proposal sometime soon. But the abbreviated House proposal focused only on primarily three budget areas: foundation allowance increases, including special education, mental health and school safety grant funding, and retirement funding. So as we move through these slides, just keep in the back of your mind that the House did not weigh in on a number of the factors that we are looking for. So first up, everyone is interested to know our foundation allowance. Potentially any increases or how we might be funded, that's our primary source of School Aid. Under the general education and special education foundation allowances, this current school year, we are receiving $9,608 per full-time equivalent pupil. And those proposed increases for 25-26 are as follows. The governor's proposal was $392 per pupil increase. That would equate to about a $6.2 million increase for our district. The House proposed an increase of $417,000, and the Senate proposed an increase of $400 per pupil, both generating right around $6.6, $6.3 million. Now, all of those proposals do include special education foundation allowances to equal the general education foundation allowance, and that has not always been the case. That's new just in the last couple of years, and I'm glad to see that they're maintaining that. This is kind of a wordy slide, but the idea is to share with you that all three budget proposals include ongoing funding. For the mental health and safety grant funding that we've had for the last three years, they all do include weighted funding increases for special education. And then the executive and the Senate proposals also include weighted funding increases for at-risk, the Great Start Readiness Program, which is a preschool program, and career and technical education monies. That's important. That refers back to our Michigan School Finance Collaborative work in 2018, which did a lot of research and advocated for weighted, weighted funding approaches, mathematical-formularic approaches to funding higher-cost populations of students and academic needs. All three of the budget proposals also included ongoing funding for free school meals, when combined with the federal funding sources. However, even with all those increases, there is a call for reduced funding for retirement costs for MIPERS, our Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System. So there are cost increases for the healthcare component to replace, to replace 50% of the previous contributions that employees formerly made, but yet there are reduced payments to districts for current-year liabilities. So some special, rather, some School Aid increases along with some reductions in that funding. So those were some, just some highlights from all three budget proposals. I will report back to you once the House generates their larger proposal. But we'll shift now to the May Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference. Just a couple of highlights that I think are, are curious and important to note. First of all, on the blue font, just the biggest takeaway from the entire day in May was that the projected annual revenue growth in the School Aid Fund is nominal yet positive. So that's a great thing. It ranges from 2.1% to 2.6% for this current fiscal year. And recall that the state's fiscal year goes through September, so we're still in the middle of their fiscal year. So they're still projecting their revenue estimates for this, for their fiscal year currently. And then long-term, for FY 28 and 29, that increases a little bit to 2.7% to 2.9% of revenue increase. So that's good news. So I'll take your attention here to the blue arrow that's on the School Aid Fund row. And we see a total projected revenue for FY 24-25 of $18.5 billion, billion dol, 18, I'm sorry, $18.8 billion. And I'll take your attention to the blue square that shows that that is an increase from FY 24, from last year, of about 2.6%. So that's good news. And reading further to the right then, under the FY 25-26 column, we see that School Aid Fund, that percentage change from '25 for FY '26 is that 2.1% increase. Now, in green, I wanted to share with you that the state's general fund general purpose revenue projection declined from the January estimates. So that may put some pressure on the School Aid Fund, because, let's say, where the green arrow is, we see that the total revenue projected there is $14.4 billion in the state's general fund. So in January, that's the information on which the governor issued the executive budget. The Senate and the House presented their budgets. So if the May revenue estimate is less than what was estimated in January, we see that's a reduction of about $221 million. Perhaps the House, the Senate, the governor may have used those revenue estimates to build her budget, their budget. And some of those budget priorities may shift. And there's, there's an opportunity for the legislature to move funds between, monies between those funds. And I'm not saying it's going to happen, but we always keep our eye on that when there's a significant reduction in those revenue estimates for the general fund. Another key takeaway from this estimating conference is the pupil membership. Recall that our state aid is a factor of both enrollment as well as that dollar pupil, dollar value per pupil. So on the pupil count, we use the word pupil membership in the, in the finance world. So according to the House Fiscal Agency, and I thank them for the use of these slides, 70% of traditional districts are experiencing enrollment decline, and we are one of those districts. So a takeaway from this slide, you can see the three fiscal years listed, FY '25, '26, and '27. And you can see from left to right, it shows what the January estimate was in the number of pupils, and then the May estimate, and the change between the two, as well as the change from the prior year. So just looking down that change from prior year, you can see that local districts are losing pupils, and local public school academies are gaining students. Now, we don't have data on homeschool students or other types of populations. They are just contrasting local districts with public school academies. And we know that for some time, particularly since COVID, districts across the state are experiencing enrollment decline. And that appears that that will, that trend will continue. So with those items as a foundation, those data points, those projections at the state level, the House, the Senate, the governor's budget proposals, we move into our assumptions on which we will build our budget for next school year. So beginning with the state aid foundation, as I mentioned, it's, that equation generally is the number of pupil FTEs times that per pupil foundation allowance. It is a weighted blend, 90% of that count from the current fall and 10% from the prior school year. We project that our enrollment for next year will be based, our funding will be based on 15,883 FTE pupils. That is a loss of 151 students and a revenue loss correspondingly of about $1.5 million. On the foundation allowance side, we are going to use the assumption that the increase in the foundation allowance will be equal to the governor's proposal. It is the most conservative, but not incredibly so. It's reasonable. And so that projected revenue increase from that foundation allowance increase would generate about $6.2 million. So having that reduction in the enrollment, but the increase in the foundation allowance would net about a, about a $4.8 million increase in state aid overall, just for that, for the foundation allowance and the enrollment alone. We always project about a 2% increase in our enhancement mileage revenue. That equates to about $125,000 for next year. So with those two as our primary revenue sources in the general fund, we turn to the expenditure side of the ledger and look at those projections and the assumptions we'll use on which we will build our budget. So staffing is obviously a cost driver. About 80% to 85% of our budget is staffing. We are a service-based industry. So base, we will base our staffing levels on board-adopted class-size guidelines, and we will align that to enrollment. And because of the alignment to that declining enrollment, we are projecting about $2.25 million in savings. Across the board, as our chief HR person here reported, some more retirements. We do anticipate retirements across the district, all types of positions. And we are estimating roughly 20 FTE, equivalent to about $1 million in savings. And that's generated by new employees, maybe starting out lower on that negotiated salary schedule with a retiree, maybe a higher level of that schedule. Employment contracts, of course, we will include those negotiated collective bargaining agreements for next year and for retirement. We know that the employer rate has decreased just slightly for a little bit of savings there, but the unfunded accounting actuarial liability rate did increase by about 4.5%. So there's going to be some additional costs. But we also know that there are some revenue offsets that have been proposed in each of those three budgets. They all vary differently. So we're going to take the stance that the expenditure side will just be flat. We know there's some revenue offsets coming, but we didn't include that in the revenue projection, because we don't know. They're very widely varied, so we're not taking a guess at that. We're, having a flat assumption is still conservative. The hard cap, the hard cap refers to our benefits. So the state law tells us that we cannot spend So the state law tells us that we cannot spend in excess of a certain dollar value for our employees on single, two-person, and full-family healthcare. And that rate only increases 1/5 of 1%, so it's a very nominal value. Not to say that the premiums won't be increasing. Healthcare cost itself is on the rise. Our custodial, transportation services, even contracts such as our substitute teachers and other significant contracts will be included in the budget, of course, based on those negotiated rates. And then, we are anticipating an increase in our utilities. Our electric has increased significantly this year. And so we are building in about a $300,000 increase for gas, electric, water, refuse collection, all of that. And it's a little bit more than we would typically include. So with those assumptions, what are the other considerations that we need to make as we build our budget? So first, we want, we have to make sure that we maintain our fund balance levels according to board policy, which calls for a 10% of expenditures amount. We have to comply with state statute, which calls that, for a fund balance to be maintained at a rate of 5% of revenues, and best practices, which calls for fund balance to equate to about 15% or more of expenditures. We also want to be sure that we're aligning our staffing and all of our resources with student enrollment to be cost-effective. We are always continuously evaluating our current programs for effectiveness. We want to allocate the most restricted grant funds first. What does that mean? That means we receive a number of state and federal grants each year. So the ones that are very restricted in their use, we want to be sure that we're committing, whether it's staff salaries or some supply purchases or what have you, we want to be sure that we're fulfilling that grant first because then other expenditures on the ledger could go to fulfill other types of less restrictive grants. And then, we want to leverage the bond program to preserve general fund. So right now, we know that we have plans this summer for significant construction at Salem, at Farron, and we are certain that those improvements will take away or reduce the repair budgets in the general fund because we'll have new equipment, new furniture, new systems and infrastructure that should certainly call for less repair. Now, there are other costs that we incur across the year, and we talk at our FNO committee meeting around whether to charge those eligible bond costs to the general fund or to the bond. And so those conversations are ongoing because we want to be sure that we're preserving the general fund for classroom and student-directed use. So with that, after accounting for the projected levels of state aid funding, the enrollment decline, staffing salaries and benefits, and services and supply costs, we know we have planned budget reductions over the next four years that are necessary in order to maintain a positive fund balance within four years. So with that, the budget reduction that's necessary, or revenue generation, in order to maintain a 15% fund balance is about $5.5 million. But we know each year, some monies go unspent. We don't spend 100% of the budget. So to assume at least 1% of that budget would remain unspent is reasonable. So that would be about $2.5 million. So that net revenue generation or expense reduction that would be needed is about $3 million. So with that, we, the district has been able to identify expenditure reductions slightly in excess of that value, about 1/3 of it coming from salaries and benefits, the other 2/3 coming from professional services, supplies, and equipment. So taking a deeper dive into those reductions and the salaries and benefits bucket, if you will, we're looking to eliminate certain vacant positions and redistribute responsibilities for cost-effectiveness for savings of about $782,000. We're also looking to reduce the COVID-19-era healthcare technicians that were put in place at that time and a paraprofessional position at about $350,000 for a total cost reduction in salaries and benefits of about $1.1 million. For non-salary, non-benefit costs, we've identified some professional services to generate some savings as well. So we've identified almost $600,000 in professional service line item reductions that departments and schools have committed to take across the board. As we move through the year, each school, each department has different types of professional services in mind that they'll scale back, all contributing to this bucket of about $600,000 in savings. We will reduce the use of premier substitutes for about $450,000 of savings. This is what we've called typically our billing subs, but we will certainly, of course, have daily substitutes in our classrooms. They may even, may even be the same person. Vendor service contract renegotiations, we're looking to save about $90,000 by renegotiating certain service agreements that we have with transportation, a variety of professional services from vendors. We're looking to save about $316,000 in software. That's either by eliminating certain software suites or perhaps moving from one to another. For instance, Zoom. We moved to Zoom during COVID, I believe, and now we're going to do away with Zoom and move to Google Meet, which is part of our Google suite. So we have some savings that way. We also have other types of consulting and professional development savings that have been identified, about $184,000, as well as just some savings around copies and postage and mailing by utilizing electronic means to pay people and to communicate and what have you, where it makes sense, for a little bit of additional savings. So all-in professional service cost reductions of about $1.6, $1.7 million. And then, on the supplies and equipment, again, just that various line item reduction where schools and departments have committed to reducing their spend by about $182,000, and then a reduction in the capital outlay line items of about $242,000, for a total of savings there of about $425,000. So just to recap, we have identified about $3.2 million in expenditure reductions. When coupled with about 1% remaining of our budget, we will certainly achieve that $5.5 million in budget savings for next year. So taking us back to that budget development timeline, our next steps are that on June 5, we will review then that proposed budget of the general fund with the FNO committee. And we will also review and preview the proposed budgets for all of the funds in our district. We have a number of funds. We have a food service fund, and we have a grant fund, and we have our capital projects funds, just a number of budgets that we, that we produce each year and amend those as well. We'll also be looking at the, the final amendments for all of our funds as well. And we will bring those back forward to the full board for review on June 10. We will hold a public budget hearing, and we will collect input and public comment on that. And we will also have, of course, the first reading of that proposed budget then, as well as the amended budget for '24, '25, and then an approval for the 2026 tax levy. And then, on June 24, we'll come back for a second read and hopefully an approval of those budgets. I'm happy to take any, any questions you may have and answer any other or entertain any other considerations or comments you may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm actually going to open it up to our student co-chairs, if you'd like to start.
First of all, I know how complicated this process of putting this all together is. So I want to thank you for all your feedback. There's a lot of information, so I have no questions. But thank you for all your hard work and your team as well.
Thank you.
Again, yeah, you gave us a lot of info, and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Member Voss.
I have just one question, and you might not be able to answer it. I might have to, might have to go to HR. But when you cut healthcare tax, have, like, have we talked to the office staff at the building levels? Just because I know office staff, when we cut healthcare tax, yes, of course, we're not at the same level of care needed that we were at COVID, but there are not nurses in every building. And so we have office paras and office secretaries who are having to care for students who are coming in for shots. And, you know, for some reason, especially at the middle school level, they, students, you know, wander in thinking that, you know, they can get out of class or whatever. And those office, the office staff are finding that they are not able to get their regular work done because they are having to care for students where there's no nurse in the building at that time. And it's happening often from office staff that I talk to and see. So do we have a plan for, to help those staff?
Thank you for your question. I'll just mention that communications have absolutely and certainly been had and continue to meet. I see that Dr. Vartini and Gibbs has pulled her microphone forward, so I'll let her speak to that.
So, great question, Ms. Voss. So first of all, we have met with our administrators in our district on a consistent basis to explain this reduction. So we started in the district with 24 healthcare tax when, when COVID was here in our district. And we have slowly reduced the amount, but continue to maintain and increase our school nurses. So in a middle school, for example, the school nurse, as well as the office paraprofessional, would be the key people working with students when they come to the clinic. And the school nurse will always be available if there's an emergency. For an example, if the school nurse is at Discovery and Bentley, and there's an emergency at Discovery, the school nurse will go over there. We also will have other people identified in the building who can help if a student needs that type of support. We also know that students are coming to the clinic for various reasons. They might need a Band-Aid, or they might have a bloody nose. So we are going to be working with our building administrators so they can work with their staff on when to send a student to the office. So there will be a slight reduction in the amount of clinic coverage at our buildings, K8. But we are reviewing lots of data, and if we have a high-needs situation or some students with some health concerns that we know we need additional care, we will address that and make sure they get what they need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Treasure Keel.
So we had the benefit of having an extensive conversation about this in the FNO meeting. I wanted to point out a couple of things. These cuts, in general, are things that are going to be felt. They're things that are not something we want to do, but we don't have the level of funding that we need from our state government to support the initiatives that we have. Our funding, our, our foundation allowance this year is the same as it was last year. We got zero foundation allowance increase. So it's not a sustainable situation that we have. This is also a planned use of fund balance budget. So in addition to the, in addition to the reductions and the changes that we're doing, we will be running a deficit budget, using some of our fund balance to help support and manage the programs that we're doing. This is not sustainable in the long term. So these additional cuts will be necessary in, in future years unless the state legislature starts actually supporting us at the net level that's necessary. There's been numerous studies and work that's been done about the level of support that's necessary to provide an adequate education, and we're about 20% below that from a funding level. We're at the lowest level of all public, public schools throughout the state, and it's really unacceptable. So this is something that's not really solvable at our local level. We actually have local legislators that are incredibly supportive of us in public education. But at the overall state level, they're not making the right choices to support traditional public education in this process, and this is something that's got to change. I know it's a little bit of a soapbox, but this is one of the things that is a challenge for us when we look at the hard cuts that we're seeing with healthcare tax or anything else. There's a great process the administration went through called transformations, where they try to make the least disruptive cuts in the classroom. And that's really where these cuts are occurring right now, and, you know, but they still will be felt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. VP Sidhu.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to go off of what Treasure Keel said. These cuts will be felt. When I look at professional services, premier subreductions, consulting, and Member Voss mentioned the health tax, all of these people interface with students. And, I mean, these are hard cuts for us to, for me to look at. And I know it has to be done, given the fact that we have to balance a budget. With that, we have to balance a budget by June 24.
Legally by June 30.
June 30. But we have a board meeting on the 24th, so I'm guessing that that's when we're going to be voting. Are we going to have a budget by the state before that date?
Thank you for that question. I don't believe we will.
So we're just going to base it on the lowest, basically no increases, go off of zero increase because we don't know where they're going to end up.
So I appreciate your comments and your thoughts because we don't know where they will end up. We don't. And likewise, we don't know where our enrollment will land. We don't know, we don't know a number of significant factors. We don't know the number of retirements. We don't know exactly where healthcare will come in. We don't know what the retirement cost offset revenue might be. We don't know the level of other grants. We don't know the level of federal grants. It's really all up in the air. However, I'm not aware of a year where they actually have the budget done by June 30. And if they did, we really need it done by now so that we can incorporate all those variables into the work. So we're not going to let that hold us up. We're going to continue to build this budget based on the assumptions that I've presented this evening, with the foundation of those considerations and our compliance with board policy and state statute and so forth. Because we also have those mechanisms of a budget amendment process. So as we move in through the fall, we will learn our enrollment. We will learn of what the, what the legislature did with school aid funding. Sometimes that's still getting shaken out once they even pass that bill into the fall. So then, once we see what the, what that state aid looks like after we have our October pupil count, then we'll be able to assemble, and we're doing it all the time. Even though this feels like budget season, every day is budget season because there's something on the horizon. And we have to be sure we have data to prepare and make really good decisions with that data. So with that, then, we move into that amendment. And then, we always have a final amendment at the end of the year also so that we can continue to be current, evaluating our programs, being sure that we're being really cost-effective and efficient, and make the best utility of every dollar.
Thank you. And just to add to Patrick's, I know, what's the amount for adequately educating a student from the research collaborative?
That's what I was trying to draw.
About $11,000, $12,000, right?
It's in excess of $12,000.
Is it $12,000? And that, I don't think even keeps up with the rate of inflation.
So we also have those projections as well, what that would look like with inflation-adjusted numbers.
We'll get those in June?
Oh, we do that just internally.
Okay.
And it also doesn't include that, that educational costs don't include transportation, which is, you know, about 5% or 10% of our, yeah, 7% of our budget. So it's a substantial amount.
Thank you for all your work. I know that was a lot for you to put together. Thank you.
My pleasure. Member Picard?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the report. It was nice and clear and everything, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Amen.
Thank you for all your hard work. I just had one question. Could you give me, or I guess all of us, some examples of the kinds of professional services that staff have identified that would be cut?
I sure can. Some of those, and I want to keep in mind that it's maybe, some service levels may change, but also just the dollar value of those same service levels because we're looking to just kind of renegotiate some of those as well. I do see our chief academic officer pulling her microphone forward.
I can pop in and talk about some of them. So what we've tried to do is be very diligent over the last few years to build some internal capacity to do some of these things, looking ahead and doing an environmental scan across multi-years. So for example, there may be consulting firms we've worked with to build in capacity for some of our internal staff to do specific things around leadership support or coaching models, different things like that, knowing that as we're looking ahead, it doesn't look like there's going to be this huge cash flow coming. So those types of things. Some of the things we do with, around some of our additional research opportunities and stuff with some external partners that are great things to do when we have the funds to do it. But the balance between that and touching classrooms or having to reduce staff that are directly impacting students in any way, shape, or form, we think about like concentric circles out. What's the furthest away from our students in the classrooms, and then working our way backward there? So also, we're looking at, just based on some contract language, and also ways we can shift some of our professional development work, some stipends for some of the summer work that we've traditionally done, looking at how we do that differently, how we leverage people in a different way. So trying to get to those things first before we have to get any closer to classrooms. So those would be some examples of one of, some of the things we're talking about.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to end on a note that I heard a couple of you mention that we are feeling these reductions. We will feel these. And we will continue to go through this difficult work for the next handful of years to properly align our resources with what we're receiving from the state, to align it with our enrollment, and take the best of the best from COVID, right? We've had to add a lot of supports and supplies and a number of services through that era. And we need to be sure that we're letting go of some older things or the, and keeping the best, the most effective tools for our students in a cost-effective way. So it's always, we're going to be going through this exercise continuously, and we hope that patterns and trends change. and we hope that patterns and trends change. But I'm proud of the work that we've done so far, and we'll just continue to work through it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Minnick. Don't go too far, because we have the next item on here. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase security cameras for CTE areas at PSEF. This is a first reading. Can you run us through that, please?
Thank you, President Christensen. This is a request of first reading for purchase of replacement security cameras in our career and technical education areas at PSEF. We have identified the need because the current cameras are beyond their useful life. It's old technology, and there are some security vulnerabilities and FERPA compliance concerns. This purchase will be made through software consortium pricing for a total not to exceed $73,657. The scope includes a full replacement and installation of the cameras, and integration with our Secure Camera Server system. And we will be funding this with our 31A, a State of Michigan School Aid Budget Allocation for Mental Health and Safety Grant. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have, or I may defer those questions to another expert. Start with Josh.
I have no questions, and I'm glad to see that we're able to work these into our existing systems as well. Thank you.
I also have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Voss?
No questions. Thank you.
Treasurer Kehoe? So we discussed this extensively at FNO. These security cameras are used throughout the CTE program, but when they're in educational spaces, they will not be providing recording. They'll only be providing live viewing. So for example, in our school stores, the teachers going back and forth between the classroom and the school store, and the camera allows them to get a live view between those two places, but it is not actually recording in the educational space. So we had a great discussion about this, and we're excited to see these things be aligned with our technology that we have for camera systems throughout the district. Yeah. Okay. VP Sudhu?
Yeah, maybe a little bit off-topic. With regard to the 31A money, how much did we get this past year? And how much of that was allocated for mental health support versus security cameras and equipment?
So we've got the final number. Maybe Ms. Minnick can help us, but we divided that in half in terms of the two supports, the two departments. We had $125 million across the state, which was different from the $150 million that we had previously. There was a supplemental bill that came one time, if you recall, from the state in October, to try to make up, so we would continue to get the same amount that we have received for the last two years. And then to be determined what will come forward for 31A next year.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Picard?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Member Ahmed?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we have action item number 25-05-75. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase furniture and equipment for bid package number HS-4A, Canton High School Innovation Hub Robotics Edition. This is a final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase furniture and equipment for bid package HS-4A, Canton High School Innovation Hub Robotics Edition. Final reading, action item 250575.
Can I have a second?
I can second.
Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Ahmed. This is a final reading, so we have this on our agenda for first reading last meeting. Any additional questions or comments? No? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail.
Yep. So I bring to you tonight for a first reading a consideration of a new high school course called Understanding and Using AI Responsibly. So I'm pretty excited about this course. It's a very innovative course, very forward-looking course. This would provide 11th and 12th grade students with hands-on, comprehensive introduction to artificial intelligences, and it would focus on various aspects of AI. We did talk about this very extensively in SPA, how AI systems function in various applications across all different opportunities in the future, including workplaces like healthcare business, entertainment, social media. Students would engage in hands-on projects, discussions, and interactive simulations. They would develop problem-solving, ethical decision-making, and data analysis skills, work with AI models and tools, and explore essential questions about AI creativity, employment use, privacy implications, and environmental impact. This would be an 18-week course. It would launch the second semester of next year, the 25-26 school year. In a unique, creative way that the team has come together and developed this course, it would allow students to make a choice of one of two options for the credit. They could choose to either do a half-credit of English credit, because it's been mapped to the high school ELA standards for ELA 11 and 12, or a .5 CTE credit around computer science. Now, this class has been designed very explicitly to be very inclusive, because there is coding developed in this class, but it is entry-level coding, so it's scaffolded, so that any student in our, in our school, regardless of their prerequisites, or anything that they've taken previously, could enter this course and be highly successful. You'll see in this, in the outline, how it attaches to our learner profile. And it really is looking at helping students prepare for their world, you know, world of work, world of college and career readiness, because we know that AI is ubiquitous. It is everywhere now, and it will be involved everywhere in our students' future. So it's standards-aligned, and aligned with the ELA standards and career and technical education competencies. And we're really looking at college, career, and life readiness. Total proposed cost for this course, back to what Ms. Minnick was saying about looking at those restrictive funds first. This course has been mapped such that 20, overall, it would cost us $20,400 just for the development and that kind of stuff. It's not for the teacher and things like that. But of that, CTE grants will pay for $18,000 of the course, for supplies and professional development. So what we would expense out of our general fund for this course would be some of the stipends for the curriculum development work, to the tune of $2,400. So I'm going to open it up to any questions you might have, and answer anything again for you.
I'll start with our student co-chairs, Josh and Arjun.
First of all, I know I always say that I'd love to take all these courses. This is one that I definitely am going to try and prioritize next year. I'm trying to figure out how to work around my ELA classes now. I also love to see that this is like a class kind of tailored to the generation that we're living in, and the things that are changing around us. I just think it's an amazing idea, and glad to see that we're bringing in classes such as this. Amazing job.
Thank you, Josh, and I hope you have room for it next year when you're a senior, right?
So I have a couple of questions. To start off, you mentioned it's for 11th and 12th graders, but I'm wondering, you said there was low prerequisites, and I know a lot of people are interested in coding, AI, especially with the rise of it, in 9th and 10th grades, wondering the accessibility of this course. Is it open to 9th, 10th graders?
Not next year, but we'll look, as we look ahead and the course is built out, we'll see, we'll see what it looks like, and whether we want to expand it beyond 11th and 12th grade. But for the first launch year next year, we're looking at 11th and 12th grade, so.
Oh, and then one more thing. So you mentioned that it's only going to be a semester long. But I know that there, especially with like AI and CS, and in the higher levels of it too, there's a lot of interest in people, with people who have a deep understanding of coding.
Yes.
But I see that a semester-long class can also have restrictions on the people who want to take the class. I just like to mention myself, in my scheduled plan for the rest of high school, there's not a single class I have that's going to be semester-long. So I believe, I'm trying to see, like, will there be any opportunity for a class like this? Because it's an amazing class to give students opportunities who are interested in AI, to be a year-long class, so kids don't have to worry about what is the other semester-long class they're going to have to take, if this only takes one semester.
Thank you for that, Arjun. What we'll be looking at as we, as we launch this course for the first time is also looking at interest, and building it out from there. Our goal with any new course that we design is, as we get more feedback from students, always expanding and creating additional pathways. This is one of those courses that, like many of our longitudinal pathways, may end up becoming a four-year pathway at some point in time. This is our first go-around with this, so we'll keep you in mind as we do some feedback and stuff for the future too. So, thank you.
Member Voss?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer Kehoe? Super excited about this class. Lots of things happening in the world with AI, especially across our CTE programs, and English and everything else. I concur with some of the feedback that this was likely to grow, but I'm really glad to see it come forward. Obviously, as we look at success here, this may be also something we consider as a summer program to allow people to take this program in the summer. It will help our, our rising seniors in what they want to do, because they'll be gone. But I did have a technical question around access.
Yep.
Do we currently block access to generative AI solutions in the district?
Primarily, yes, for students right now. We've opened access for our staff. Students can use it with staff members, but it isn't wide open for all students right now. Yeah, we're also looking at, we've been spending this year doing some learning behind the scenes to look at a possibility of rolling out an AI tool across the district next year. We're in, we're nearing the finalization of the plan of what that tool may be, so.
So then, would we be offering a district-controlled tool as part of this process? Or would we be opening access to the many different generative AI tools? And then, if that is the case, how do we restrict access to the broad use, but allow it to be used within this class?
Our goal is to get to the point where we're able to say yes more often to tools, because we know that they will help build our students' future skills. And one of the things we're doing with this one is mapping it through and ensuring it aligns with our AI policy, but looking at various tools to allow students to use here, but also beyond. We have, we have a number of teachers right now doing some innovative work in an innovation cohort around AI access to students. So we have some teachers, for example, who have launched, created chatbots to help support it, to get feedback from students. We also have some teachers doing some very unique critical thinking skill, mapping across with students as well. And we, you know, we want to continue to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students for their future, so.
I'm excited about that innovation. If you can keep us up to date as we make progress in that process.
We will, I will keep you up to date, as will my, whoever comes next. So, that's right. But I will, I will be sure that it's on our list to make sure everybody's updated. So thank you for that. Yep.
I have no questions, but I agree with some of the excitement that has been shared. I love hearing from our student co-chairs, how interested they are. And it's so relevant, so I'm appreciative that we're developing curriculum around it. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And I just want to shout out the team that created this and put it together. So Heather Schramm, Jeff Blakesley, Monteen Barbie, and John McGulick came together to do, to do the primary foundational work around this, with lots of support from other staff as well. Super proud of the work that they've done this year.
It's great. VP Sudhu?
Yeah, just a little background. We did discuss this in SPA in detail. Everyone was excited. SPA, for those of you that don't know, is Student Performance and Achievement. We don't actually go to the SPA, but we have a Student Performance and Achievement meeting. I always feel like I have to clarify, because people that are watching, they're like SPA. They're going to the SPA. But it is our Student Performance and Achievement Committee where we discuss this in depth. There was a lot of excitement from the students and the committee members. With regard to policy, I will mention, we worked on the policy last year with input from local businesses, entrepreneurs. We had people come in and talk to us about how they are using AI in engineering and marketing, in their entrepreneurship business. So there were so many applications, and they were telling us, do not restrict this from students, do not, you know, block it completely. So that's where we talked about sort of a slow rollout, because we really have to protect students and their data. Because if we don't have those protective measures within those tools that they're using in school, then it's not safe for them. So I think part of the challenge is looking at which tools can be used with those data protections, and I know Mark does a great job with that. Thank you for doing this work and the team.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. It's really heartwarming to see proactive work. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We're on to Citizens' Comments Overflow. We do have a few folks here in the list. We'll get started. I believe this is Linda Verduco. No? May have left. Okay. All right. We have Stephanie Boone. Adam Reedbans?
Yeah, I think I have that.
Okay. Correct me if I said that wrong.
No, thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Before I get started, I know the time will start, but that's okay. Just want to say, so cool that you're incorporating some of the high school students in this. I think that's awesome. AI class, cutting edge. I think that's super cool. So I just want to share a couple of thoughts, kind of as a follow-up on how the meeting started today. You know, wisdom and folly both literally yell aloud from a hill. That's what we hear. You know, so you have these messages that are both super, super loud. But whatever is loudest, it's never an excuse that we just go for what's loud. What really matters is which one's the truth, which one is the wisdom. And you know, I wanted to focus on a couple of things tonight, as I think about our kids. And there's two different equality acts out there. Think of wisdom and folly. We have God's Equality Act, and then we have Satan's Equality Act, okay? God has actually said some things that, you know, we all agree with. Black, white, male, female. You know, if we look back at Title VII, before Title IX with girls' sports, Title VII actually added gender as a protected class. And our federal government said the reason that it was added as a protected class was because, like the other things, race, you know, national origin, it was immutable or unchangeable. That's what our government said. Now here, we have Title IX. We have some, some males that would like to compete in our female sports, enter our female bathrooms, and that's just not right. I wanted to focus also on the issue of abortion. I just want to hit a couple of topics, because we have to know what God has said. In Jeremiah 32, God says that it never even entered his mind. He never commanded an abortion, or child sacrifice. The chapter immediately before that and after that, he says, "The stars are fixed in place." And unless you can change the stars, or the path that the sun goes throughout the sky, those are fixed things. Unless you can change those, you can't change my word. My word stands forever. So I just want to encourage us, you know, the Bible does say that one day every knee is going to bow, and every tongue will confess. God says that. We can argue with that, might not think it's going to happen. But I challenge us all kind of picturesquely to be on our knees. And there's two choices. Our hands are either up in praise and worship to our God, the King that created us, or we're on our knees, and we're just trying to move the stars around and the things that he said. And I just don't want to be at a point of foolishness at the end of my life, where I'm actually focused so much on trying to change the things that God has said. You know, if I think about the way that the rainbow, God used that. There's seven colors in a natural rainbow. One of them is indigo. Indigo symbolizes God. So the LGBTQ rainbow actually only has six colors. I don't know if you know that, but it took out God. There's six colors. Whereas in nature, it occurs with seven. God's perfect number. The devil's always doing things with six. Six feet under, right? Six feet apart. Separation and death is what he's always focused on. So I just want to encourage us all to think about, what if God says, if it's all for the children, he would have a different message for us tonight.
Okay. Up next, we have Deborah Finkenbiner Pepper.
We have four together. It should be Michelle, Sandra.
I don't, well, I.
The only reason that we need to do it is because we're reading a resolution.
Yeah, the little popcorn thing like you guys did the other night.
So I have.
Then you read this, then you read that, then you read that.
Who do you have for your next four?
I have Joan.
Yeah.
I have Sarah.
Yeah.
And I have Michelle.
Yeah. Okay, great, great. Okay, so I'm going to go first.
Okay, and you are?
I'm Michelle.
Okay, Michelle, you, we'll reshuffle you. That is fine. If there's a sequencing.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Michelle Mustakis.
Yeah, very good. I think you've learned to pronounce it after, I've been up there screaming so many times. I'm Michelle Mustakis, and I am with Western Wayne, chapter of Indivisible. I'm going to try really hard not to address some of the things that have already been said, but I just do want to say that I wish that people would bring the kind of passion that they seem to bring to what they've been saying tonight to the millions of children that will be cut from their food stamps, from their SNAP benefits, from their Medicaid. That is what we should be focusing on. That is what counts in a child's life. So I'm just gonna start there. And so tonight, what I came for is to talk about, as I have been, adopting, asking the board to adopt a Safe Schools Resolution that will protect our immigrant students. And the purpose of this resolution is to ensure, my glasses, to ensure that our immigrant students have the rights that they are entitled to under our Constitution. And why do I want this implemented, adopted? Because it's just simply the right thing to do, and we need to have the courage to do it. So with that, I thought it would be a good idea to just simply read the resolution and the accompanying policy so that you can kind of just understand what's in it. It's not radical. It is. So I'm gonna start out, and then we're gonna go around. So, "Whereas it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free public K-12 education, and the district welcomes and supports all students. Whereas the district has a responsibility to ensure that all students who reside within its boundaries, regardless of immigration status, can safely access a free public K-12 education. Whereas federal immigration law enforcement activities on or around district property and transportation routes, whether by surveillance, interview, demand for information, arrest, detention, or any other means, harmfully disrupt the learning environment to which all students, regardless of immigration status, are entitled and significantly interfere with the ability of all students, including our US citizen students and students who hold other legal grounds for presence in the US to access a free public K-12 education." All right, we better do that.
Up next, we, we have, is it Deborah?
Sarah.
Sarah, okay. Up next we have Sarah Krasinski.
Yes. Okay. "Whereas, through its policies and practices, the district has made a commitment to a quality education for all students, which includes a safe and stable learning environment, means of transportation to and from school sites, the preservation of classroom hours for educational instruction, and the requirement of school attendance. Whereas, parents and students have expressed to the district fear and confusion about the continued physical and emotional safety of all students and the right to access a free public K-12 education through district schools and programs. And whereas, educational personnel are often the primary sources of support, resources, and information to assist and support students and student learning, which includes their emotional health. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the US Immigration Enforcement Office, state or local law enforcement agencies acting on behalf of ICE, or agents or officers for any federal, state, or local agency attempting to enforce federal immigration laws are to follow district policy, blah blah, attached to and incorporated in this resolution to ensure the district meets its duty to provide all students, regardless of immigration status, access to a free public K-12 education. Be it further resolved that the board declares the district to be a safe zone for its students, meaning that the district is a place for students to learn, to thrive, and to seek assistance, information, and support related to any immigration law enforcement that interferes with their learning experience. Be it further resolved that the district shall, within 30 days of the date of this resolution, create a rapid response team to prepare, in the event a minor child attending school in the district is deprived of adult care, supervision, or guardianship outside of school due to a federal law enforcement action such as detention by ICE or a cooperating law enforcement agency. Be it further resolved, it continues to be the policy of the district not to allow any individual or organization to enter a school site if the educational setting would be disrupted by that visit. Given the likelihood of substantial disruption posed by the presence of ICE or state or local law enforcement agencies acting for ICE, any request by ICE or other agencies to visit a school site should be presented to the superintendent's office for review as to whether access to the site is permitted by law, a judicial warrant is required, or any other legal considerations apply. This review should be made expeditiously, but before any immigration law enforcement agent or officer appears at a school site."
Push that button together.
Are, are you Joan?
I am.
Joan? Okay.
Thank you. Where did you guys leave off? Oh, yeah, those all say that. You get the drift here, right? "Be it further resolved, in its continued commitment to the protection of student privacy, the district shall review its record-keeping policies and practices to ensure that no data is being collected with respect to student immigration status or place of birth, and cease any such collection as it is irrelevant to the educational enterprises and potentially discriminatory. Be it further resolved, should ICE or other immigration law enforcement agents request any student information, the request should be referred to the superintendent's office to ensure compliance with Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, and student constitutional privacy standards for a judicial warrant and any other limitation on disclosure. This review should be conducted expeditiously, but before any production of information is made. Be it further resolved, the district shall post this resolution at every school site and distribute it to district staff, students, and parents using usual means of communication, and that the resolution will be translated into languages spoken by students at home. Be it further resolved, the superintendent shall report back on compliance with the resolution to the board at its next meeting. Be it further resolved that the board directs the superintendent to review district policies and practices regarding bullying and report back to the board at its next meeting and communicate to staff, students, and parents the importance of maintaining a bullying-free environment for all students. Be it further resolved, the board affirms that certified district personnel have academic freedom to discuss the resolution during class time, provided it is age-appropriate, and students are to be made aware that the district counselors are available to discuss the subjects contained in this resolution. Be it further resolved, after-school providers and other vendors and service providers who contract with the district shall be notified of this resolution within 30 days and required to abide by it." We have copies.
Deborah Finkerbiner Pepper.
Finkerbiner Pepper, yes. So I'm gonna read the sample district policy, if it's part of this. So it's titled, "Access to Education, Student Privacy, and Immigration Enforcement." "School personnel must not allow any third-party access to a school site without permission of the site administrator. The site administrator shall not permit third-party access to the school site that would cause disruption to the learning environment. The school board, in resolution number to be provided in the future, based on its educational experience and as part of its deliberate process as our grow, as our governing body, has found that access to a school site by immigration law enforcement officials substantially disrupts the learning environment, and any such request for access should be referred to the superintendent's office immediately. School personnel must contact the superintendent's office immediately if approached by immigration law enforcement agents. Personnel must also attempt to contact the parents or guardians of any students involved. The superintendent's office must process requests by immigration law enforcement agents to enter school site or obtain school data as follows. Number one, request identification from the officers or agents and photocopy it. Number two, request a judicial warrant and photocopy it. Two A, if no warrant is present, request the grounds for access. Make notes and contact legal counsel for the district. Number three, request and retain notes of the names of the students and the reasons for the request. Three A, if a school site personnel have not yet contacted students, parents, or guardians, do so. Three B, do not attempt to provide your own information or conjecture about the students, such as their schedule, for example, without legal counsel present. Number four, provide the agents with a copy of this policy and resolution number to be determined in the future. Number five, contact legal counsel for the district. Number six, request the agents' contact information. And, number seven, advise the agents that you are required to complete these steps prior to allowing them access to any school site or school data." Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next we have Rachel Hayes.
Hello. My name is Rachel Hayes, and I'm a PFLAG board member and a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm sorry to say that we are living in a time when too many believe that hate toward others is normal, appropriate, and acceptable. It's no surprise when our government is setting an example of persecution of people for who they are as human beings. For example, the ACLU is currently tracking 588 anti-LGBTQ bills in the US. More than 850 anti-LGBTQ bills have been filed so far in 2025. Eight hundred and fifty in its only May. This is up from just over 100 in all of 2020. While not all these bills will become law, they all cause harm to LGBTQ people. The vast majority of these bills target nearly every aspect of transgender life: bathroom access, IDs, medical care, even the legality of one's existence. The goal is clear: to make it impossible for transgender people to live openly, safely, and with dignity. And this hate and persecution, this othering, is not solely reserved for trans people. We have been given permission to vilify all queer people, immigrants, and people of color. We are now encouraged to be mean. PCCS is a microcosm of our broader community, reflecting its social and political norms. This meanness, this disregard and disrespect for others who are different from ourselves has permeated our schools. Too many kids walk through their days feeling unwelcome, unaccepted, and anxious. But it doesn't have to be that way. PFLAG and Western Wayne Indivisible say that this is abnormal, inappropriate, and unacceptable. And the good news is that most of you agree. We are thankful for your response to our concerns and for your willingness to see the reality that kids face every day. We want to thank those who have sat down with us to work together to find solutions. Thank you, school board trustees, Anna Pumpchuk-Sidou, Jennifer Voss, Patrick Keough, and those on the board who have offered words of encouragement. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services Kurt Tiskowitz, Chief Human Resource Officer Abdul Madjun, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer Beth Rail, Canton High School Principal David Reed-Nordwall, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Katie Illigic, and Queer Youth Committee Advisor Olivia Foster. It's easy to claim to care for all children in our schools. Anyone can speak words of concern. It's much harder to invite tough discussions, to face harsh realities, and to then take concrete actions to make real change for kids who need help. Thank you for truly caring about all of our district's children. And we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next we have Heather Gatney.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Heather Gatney, and I live in the city of Plymouth, and I have two children who go to school here in the district. I'm here with members of our local indivisible group and PFLAG because we care deeply about the safety and well-being of LGBTQ plus students. Over the past few months, I have watched as the climate in our schools has grown increasingly hostile. My own children have told me about the bullying they witnessed. My middle schooler hears homophobic slurs daily. And even my elementary-aged child has started encountering hateful language at school. This isn't just hearsay. It's happening in our classrooms and hallways, often without intervention. Last month, students at East Middle School's Gay-Straight Alliance shared their own experiences with bullying during a meeting. These stories, documented by their advisor, Kelly Voit, are heartbreaking and urgent. One student shared that they were dead-named after Trump was elected. They were told, "Welcome back, dead name." Other students shared stories of being told things like, and I quote, "You're disgusting. God doesn't like people like you. This is why you're going to hell. You'll always be a girl." These students also said they routinely hear the F-slur, T-slur, and words like gay and trans used as insults. I believe we can all agree that every student deserves to feel safe and respected in our schools. I also believe that most of our dedicated teachers and staff genuinely want to protect our students and stop harassment, but they need the right tools and support from the administration to do so effectively. When slurs go unchecked, identities are dismissed, or bullying is ignored, it sends a harmful message that LGBTQ plus students don't belong. This isn't just about hurt feelings. It's about mental health, academic success, and even lives. Research shows that LGBTQ plus youth face higher risks of depression, self-harm, and suicide when they lack support. Therefore, I'm urging the board to take action by implementing mandatory training for all teachers and staff on how to proactively address anti-LGBTQ plus bullying. This training should empower our educators to intervene when they hear harmful language, create inclusive classrooms, and affirm LGBTQ plus students' dignity. Silence is not neutrality. It's permission for harm to continue. Our schools should be places of learning and belonging for every child. By providing our educators with the necessary resources and training, we can show LGBTQ plus students that this district values their safety and humanity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Lori Mayers.
Thank you, President Christensen, Superintendent, Mayor, and Board Members. I'm Lori Mayers, President of PFLAG Plymouth-Canton. In recent meetings, our group has shared with you our concerns about bullying and slurs against LGBTQ students that we have heard from students. We have heard that some changes are being put in place to create better accountability on the hate and bias forum, for which we thank administrators Beth Rail, Abdul Madjun, Katie Illigic, and others. While we know that the current federal government wants to literally erase diversity, equity, and inclusion, we know that these values are critical to the success of Plymouth-Canton Community Schools. But beyond district policies, we need to create a culture that encourages and requires students to treat each other with respect. We need to create a culture where teachers immediately address slurs and insults instead of pretending not to hear them. We need to create a culture where bullying in all its forms is treated seriously. Matt's Law, named after an East Lansing boy who died by suicide, mandates that districts and schools address bullying and report all incidents. Yet it seems that some schools in our district have not taken the reporting requirement seriously. In 2023 to 24, East Middle School reported only one bullying incident. And in the two school years before that, West Middle School reported zero incidents for two years in a row. Salem High School, with 2,000 students, reported one bullying incident in 2021 and two in 2223. I wish these numbers were real, but I think we all know they can't possibly be. I urge all school principals and administrators to take bullying seriously, to follow the law, and to report and address bullying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next we have Ian Gonzalez.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Ian Gonzalez. I'm a member, sorry. Well, nevermind. I'm Ian Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Canton, Michigan, and also representative as part of Western Wayne Indivisible, who is concerned about the safety of our students in the Plymouth-Canton Community District. I'm here to talk to you today about the Michigan's new Safe Homes, Safe School Law passed in 2024, which requires that school districts inform their parent, parent and caregiver communities about Michigan's Safe Guns Storage Law every year. First of all, I want to thank you all for being ahead of- First of all, I want to thank you all for being ahead of the law and for already sharing information about secure gun storage. As you know, this information is crucial to keeping our kids and school staff safe and saving lives. If you aren't familiar with the law, the state of Michigan passed a law in 2023 that requires gun owners to securely store their firearms with a gun lock or in a gun safe when kids are near or could reasonably be expected to be found near a firearm. Firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in Michigan. In an average year, 1,500 people die and 3,000 people are wounded by guns in Michigan. 800 of those deaths are by suicide, and over 100 children and teens die by guns each year. About 40% of the Michigan households have at least one gun, and therefore, educating parents about the importance of locking up firearms is a crucial way that we can prevent homicides, suicides, and unintentional shootings among our youth. I am very grateful for the steps that you've taken to educate our community about secure gun storage. I am here as a volunteer of End Gun Violence in Michigan and would like to offer resources and answer any questions you have about the new law. End Gun Violence in Michigan is a coalition of more than 50 organizations working for gun violence prevention. We have developed a one-pager, which Joan will hand out, that I am dropping off for you with our most up-to-date information about the Safe Homes, Safe Schools, and what school districts should expect to see and when. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is a source for materials that, sorry, is a source for the materials that you will be asked to distribute and will be sent to you via the Michigan Department of Education. The law asks you to share this information to parents by October 2025. If you need any more information, I'd be glad to set up a time to speak with you later on. And thank you for your time today, and thank you for keeping our students and district employees safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Natalie Sharp. Thank you.
My name's Natalie Sharp. A lot of you have heard me speak before. I don't plan on speaking at Citizens Comments much in the future due to some concerns like my schedule and just other things going on, but if there is a reason specifically for me to comment, I will be back. But anyways, as a PCCS grad and former staff member and substitute, I had a negative experience with the district recently, and I don't want to get into it; that's not the point of this. But the point is, is that and also my experience going to the board meetings and being a sob has made me realize some things, and I just thought I would share them with you guys as a reflection of what I've learned from just my experience and listening to these board meetings and making citizen comments myself. So the first thing I've learned is that if there's a problem, instead of complaining about it, it's always better to offer up a possible solution rather than simply complaining it doesn't really do much. I think, for an example, is the bike racks with myself. You know, I could have just spent on complaining and being like, "Oh, this school doesn't have a bike rack, not enough kids bike to school," which I did do. I was venting. But then, I came here, and I offered up a solution, and just, not just complaining for complaining's sake, but like, here's the solution, here's the benefits. And that just is so much better. And I think it's better for you guys than just to hear random complaining. Also, being grateful and having gratitude for the people who have heard me out, even if it's not the results I wanted, I realize that in a lot of countries and a lot of places, not everybody is afforded this freedom just to like, have that freedom of speech and share their opinions and being able to voice. So I'm very grateful for that, that I've been listened to, even if people don't always agree with me or doesn't go the way it planned. And also, I think it's the failures that have made me stronger in the end. I think we really need to emphasize that more in the school system, is more chances for people to fail and screw up and see what comes of it. And I think that's one of the most neglected things these schools are teaching in all the schools I've been in, giving people a chance to fail. And I've personally learned a lot from my role in the mistakes I've made in my situation and just everything, and being able to come up here and make mistakes and stumble over my words and learn, it's just such a growing process that I love. And one of my favorite parts of being a substitute teacher is being able to grow and learn every single day from my mistakes. And it's always better to be, worth it to be a part of something bigger than yourself. Most people talk about wanting to make the world a better place, but I think few people actually do it. And in my opinion, making the education system just a tiny bit better is worth it. Like, that feeling that I had an impact on this district, even if it's really small, like the fact that I was able to implement substitute feedback, it's like a small change, but it feels good knowing that I was able to do something as a community member to make the district better and make education better at large. So in conclusion, I just wanted to say, I think, as a sob, one question I get asked a lot is if I want to be a teacher? And the truth is, I have no desire to be a teacher. But, but, listen, I do think that for my career, I really do want to make a difference in education for my career path, and I think my experience with PCCS as a student, employee, sob, and everything I've been through in going up and speaking at these board meetings has really solidified that. So thank you guys for hearing me out, and I don't know when I'll be back, but at some point, I'm sure I will. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that wraps up our Citizens Comments overflow section. Up next, we have action items and discussion. So we have action item number 25-05-76, Consider Approval of a Resolution Designating Local District's Wayne Reeser Election Representative. This is a final reading. Can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution designating the local district's Wayne Reeser election representative. This is a final reading, action item 250576.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by VP Sadu. I know this was on the agenda last time. Do we have any additional comments or questions around this resolution?
I just wanted to thank Member Voss for being able to attend this. I noticed that we needed a second spot, so do we?
Yes.
For the alternate?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, there is a blank, as a backup for Ms. Voss. So does anyone have the availability to be a backup or want to volunteer for that position?
What was the time for the meeting?
Let's look.
Second, 6:00 p.m., did you say?
Yep, it says...
And is the role only in the event that Ms. Voss is not able to attend?
Correct. Yep, we need to name an alternate, it says right here. The board, I'm going to read part of the resolution here, or action item. It says, "The board does hereby approve the designation of Jennifer Voss as a representative of the board for the electoral body and whomever else we name as an alternate, as an alternate, excuse me, in the event the designated representative is unable to attend. Which body will elect one candidate to the vacancy on the Wayne Reeser Board on Monday, June 2, 2025?"
So I can support this as an alternate in the unlikely event that Jennifer can't attend? So just ask her to let me know as soon as possible so I can shuffle things around.
Fair enough. Thank you for volunteering for that, being an alternate. So that being said, do we have to...
Do we have to vote on this with the names in there?
Do we need a new motion after we add this? I'm sorry. Or can we just call for a vote as amended?
There hasn't been a motion to amend the resolution, so I think...
Can I have a motion to amend this resolution to add Member Keough as the alternate?
Madam President, I move that we amend the resolution to add Member Keough as an alternate.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Member Keough and seconded by Members Sadu. I will call for the vote at this point. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Up next, we have action item number 25...
That was only the...
Oh.
That was only the amendment. Now, now we have to vote on the amended resolution.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected.
Sorry.
Okay, so can I please have... Do I need another motion?
I don't think we need another motion because I think we have amended it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote on the amended action item number 250576. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-0. Now we will move on. Thank you, everybody. Action item number 250577, Consider Approval of a Resolution for Local District Vote on Wayne Reeser Budget. This is a final reading. Do we have any other questions or commentary around this? Okay, can I have...
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a local district vote on Wayne Reeser budget. This is action item 250577, and it is a final reading.
Thank you. Second, please. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough. It was seconded by Members Ahmed. Do we have any questions or comments around this action item? No, hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Okay, we're on to follow-up board questions, and I believe we had one here, it looks like it was complete, in our May 16th board notes. Did we have any questions from this evening that we picked up? I had heard one from Members Sadu, I think, around the 31AA funding, what percentage went to security, went to mental health, he said, in half.
The answer is yeah.
Fifty-fifty, so that's all. So...
I had a request to have a follow-up to the board as they solidify their AI technology practices for this course.
Okay. Okay, any others? No? All right. Thank you very much. We're going to take a short recess as we transition to a board workshop on our dynamic plan. This is still an open board meeting, so anyone who wants to hang in there with us past 9:30 for the workshop, you're welcome to stay. Okay, like I said, five minutes, we'll return at 9:28.